You guys can't see it from this side, but it looks like a penguin.
An owl.
Yeah, owl, right. Okay, so Matt Clark will call the meeting to order. Thank you, everyone, for coming up for our meeting. And we will start with public participation.
When I read your agenda tonight, you were going to be talking about the science for Wellington. I'm so thrilled to be hearing about that for a while and, you know, waiting to see who was really doing it. Because I think that's one thing that's really going to happen. I think it's going to give it that dimension we need. But my concern is, if you do it.
Just for the record, we have your name.
Oh, I'm sorry, I'm Joan Taraszkowicz. Fifteen lists the road. But anyways, if a lot of towns you go through, they have this town seal. Well, so when I first came here and saw the town seal, it was even worse than this. Of course, I was a new town. And I looked at it. I don't hate to put this on tape, but it looked like an egg roll. And I said, what is that? And it took me a while, and finally I discovered something else, or maybe like a steel culvert. But I couldn't tell what it was. And then later, when I saw a clear picture and I saw the climax on it, I know that climax is a type of threat. And I know that it was made down here in Wellington. But there's nothing on here that makes Wellington unique. They know a lot of towns need thread mills all over New England, and several of them made climate threats. They said, okay, so about a couple of years later, you know, I just let this go. And people were talking about the button factories. And the button factories, and this person knew the person. They were really very special to the people that lived there. And they talk a lot about them and my great aunt worked there and all this other stuff. So I said, okay, we need to tweak our town symbol and do something on this order. This is just my suggestion. It doesn't mean that has to be like this exactly. Because we had both the treadmill and the button factory. And I like this one. This is sent by, we got it by a company online. I forgot to rename. I keep the website. And it is a. I think it may be allowed to be used for free or small cost. Okay, so, but it is. What do we call copyrighted? And it might be that somebody else will come along with a better one. But I chose this one because I liked it. It's simple lines. It's big enough that you can tell what it is from a distance. Because coming in on the road going forty miles an hour. If it's a small, they won't understand what it is. And I think it says something about Wellington, that these were two things that were very important to us. Not the only two things that were important, but, and it. For another reason, I like it. It's more, we do a lot of colonial things, and it brings it back into the industrial revolution, which was very important to Wellington. And Wellington was very important to that. So anyways, that's my suggestion. I'm gonna leave it with you. You can do with it what you like. It is biodegradable. Okay, in case you decide you want to, you know.
Thank you.
Return it or recover it. But anyways, thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Any other?
Good evening, everybody. Dave Marshall, 46 Fisher Road. I am here today to follow my point that I submitted following your last meeting. About the discussion that this commission held regarding the application I have qualified as a commission. Both EZ twenty-two thirteen. I didn't find out that you were discussing the application at that meeting last time until well into the discussion. And had some conversation with Mr. Maloney, however, say, at the end, and discuss it with him following that. It wasn't until I saw a video posted on YouTube on the seventeenth. That I realized you spoke about the application for a full twenty-four minutes. Without understanding it, without having a copy of it on here, and without apparently reading it. Which was confirmed again by Mr. Maloney, the former chair, after the fact. Again, the hearing for my applications had not even been opened yet at the PDC. I had presented the case. She hadn't heard what the application was about. Getting talked about for twenty-four minutes without even having read it, which is. The conduct is just absurd to me. Which is what prompted it to play. It's made additionally worse because I know Mr. Damano, who serves as our learning agent, knew about my application because the details of it. I'm not saying he needed to speak through it, it would have been inappropriate. But at any point, nobody made a motion saying, hey, guys, maybe you should have a copy of the application. Let's reserve talking about it until the future minute, and you've actually had a chance to understand what the application is about. Instead of an actor representing it as a matter of public business, as an advisory board to the town. For a full twenty-four minutes. It just blows me. I did receive a response from Mr. Maloney that basically shut the whole thing up. At the least, I think, a commission could do is at least have some ownership. Some acknowledgement that the conversation might have been imperfect, instead of shredding it off by now. I'm not gonna go, I'm not gonna read the finger band, and that makes no sense. I just wish, I think this commission needs to be better, needs to be more attentive. To the items they discuss, and at least understand what they're discussing. And at least give the matters they're discussing the perspective. Have that honest and veridic conversation. Because I don't speak. Here often, I don't have the opportunity to tell these meetings often. I will also say this. I, the. Focus that I've seen coming out of this commission, and I understand it's, it's. Here to prompt economic development in town. I support that a hundred percent. But I support prompting economic development that is appropriate for this town. Pushing for large-scale industrial-type development, especially in West Wellington. Really has no relevance to our plan of excavation. And I know it's as focused, I don't know, just if you, there's nothing in there that sounds as large-scale industrial use in this town. Twenty fifteen study that was used to create. A map for the West Wellington area, you know, prompted small-scale business development. It wasn't big industrial use, it was like the logistics center proposal that was added in question by your project chair. Or, I don't know much about it. I think the rail site might be interesting. But even that isn't industrial use in West Wellington, which. Honestly, has not. If the discussion around the logistics center proposal showed anything, it's that residents in town are concerned about the industrial development. And more of that, they have problems with that, I say, and all in the new TA across the street. I urge this commission to really shift their focus. And start working on promoting these small mixed-use business developments. I know the West Wellington does. When the village district was great, it's a great idea. Let's start pushing those businesses. Let's do, you know, a reasonable mixed-use commercial-style business on West Wellington. Not large industrial uses, which seems to be all we hear talked about, all I've heard talked about over the last six, seven months. So with that said, I'm gonna stop talking. Oh, sorry, on this comment. You guys are proving the minutes from last minute. I hear you have it per review. I requested in some of the ballot correspondence, the minutes should reflect. That you weren't talking about my application. We were talking about me without, she wasn't really discussed. So there should be some acknowledgement in that, in those minutes. If they're not posted, I don't know if they have a blanket, it might already be there. But I request you at least accurately reflect that the discussion held that the application was not a live application. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Nick Del, forty-nine Merle. I just wanna start off that, you know, I'm glad to see everybody here in person. But there should be a hybrid setup where public participation could happen. I mean, here I am, having to drag my kids out, that I say, so you can hear them coughing. But there's no way for me to participate otherwise, bringing them up. So I think there should be a hybrid. You know, I have concern of the EDC pushing, I don't know what Jim was, I don't, not speaking for Jim, but pushing large development. In Wellington. I mean, I know Mike during our meeting mentioned something about a data warehouse that, I don't know, at what point was discussed, but eight hundred thousand worth of data center. You know, this is Wellington, it's not Manchester, it's Harper, or whatever. Which seems that they're even pushing against some of these things. We need to stay focused on small business, not on these. Rossboro money kind of things. You know, I know we talk at different meetings, planning and zoning, but having their policy set up where we're not putting a burden on these small businesses to be able to look at plans to come here. And maybe put it on the people that can spend it, but. So you wanna, wanna reiterate the conflict of interest that I feel that Taiki has. In Wellington here, I mean, both members of the company here, Mike is also in the planning and zoning. I've been saying this for numerous times, there's a clear conflict of interest, having his company represent both boards. So. And then, I don't know if there's any way for you guys to speak up what happened with the chairman's stuff now as to why he did. I don't know if it's appropriate or not, but if you could at least hear some kind of summary as to why. Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you. And then, approval of minutes. So September fourteenth minutes. We, that, did that come through in our, I didn't get any from Rick before. So we're gonna have to table that. It's not ready. We have a continuing problem on the board, on this commission, getting minutes done on time. As a group, we're gonna discuss it, or put it on the next agenda, try and get this resolved. We're gonna need some kind, to spend some kind of resources, money, to get this done in a timely manner, that people aren't well-served by. Late minutes and things like that, so that'll be a subject of discussion. You guys agree with that?
I agree.
Okay, okay, then, election of chair. We don't have a chair. Mr. Maloney stepped down as chairman of the Economic Development Commission. Really great that he was with us for so long. I was surprised that he stepped down. So, does anybody want to make a recommendation?
I would like to make a recommendation that Phil Rankin, if he's willing, become our chairperson.
Except for them.
Not to back you into a corner.
That's right.
Just to recommend.
Charlie, we're recommending not making a motion.
Okay, I would like to make a motion then, that we elect Phil Rankin, if he's willing to be our chairperson.
I second the motion.
I, yeah, it's open discussion. You can, you can, you can, you can elect someone else, but name someone.
At this. This moment of time.
Yeah.
I appreciate the recommendation, but I respectfully decline. While we have some public visitors here. We have a need for people.
I know.
We are now, say, two people. Our current secretary, who. Offered her duties, has taken on additional responsibilities at work. Keep in mind, this is one hundred percent volunteer. And understanding why we work and why we do the things that we do. We have a need. And I would offer, we have a need for a commission. We also have a need for another party. We have to total five, we're down to. Mr. Marshall, you're very involved in the town. And we ask you, ask you to get involved. You seem to be very competent in certain areas. You're actually questioning the competence of the commission. So it might be a smart idea on our part to extend the offer to you.
I appreciate that consideration. I will. I will consider it. I honestly have considered it. I am interested, and know that my talents. May ultimately, I know my interests is more focused on planning and zoning commission. My background lends me there. But I know a lot of what exists there is not here. So I, I appreciate the outreach. What I would like to think about, you know, we'll consider that.
Be an alternate. Isn't, isn't an alternate position?
One commission member and two alternates?
I believe.
I just.
We believe.
I'm not sure what the role of the alternate is, but like, it is, I understand, like, I honestly was wanting to resign myself. Because I just don't feel like I have the time and attention to give, that I should give. And then I feel bad. And, but then I, but, but then the thing is, is that no one is gonna take that place. So if people are interested and wanna take that place, you know, but wait, I wanna say something else. So you weren't saying that you're interested more with, you know, planning and zoning, but you see the clear overlap. I actually disagree with what you said before, that we push for a certain thing. That is not why I'm here at all. I want, I would love to see the village, the whole area just lined, you know, flags, families walking there. We have a sidewalk project. You know, it takes like two or three years to get anything done. So that's where the frustration is, or a brewery to go in in the corner, a jury's like, there used to be a restaurant there many years ago. We talked about all of these different things. We need energy. We need, you're very, I mean, I would like to have you as well. You're very clear, you're a great speaker. I obviously see how driven you are when you get your mind to something. So we could use that kind of energy here to, you know, just even work on very specific projects, and it could be that between you. So I just wanted to, and you see the overlap. So, you know, I feel that there's been a mischaracterization of people here, that in some way, we try to grease the wheels for businesses, and we're getting anything from it? We're not. I mean, there's nothing, there's no factual basis for that whatsoever. There's no evidence of it, and it is just not true. We have done things that we've done, what I remember, and I do sometimes zone out, especially when we're not present. You know, I'll admit it. I'll have my headphones in, I'm doing things sometimes. So, you know. I just remember that one of the things that we wanted to work with, where there was overlap with the planning and zoning, was signage. Something as simple as right along the corridor of thirty-two from the school all the way down to where Wellington Pizza is. That there was more application process for businesses. So there's a clear overlap. That's all I'm trying to say. So somebody that understands those things, who is not a paid person, or, you know, would, would be helpful. Because we may not understand it. That's not our area of expertise. So that is one of the reasons that we have. So what I'm looking for, like, not subsidized, but we look for, where we contract out some of the tasks because of our lack of knowledge and skill. It seems to be an issue with everybody.
So, but.
Thank you.
Yeah, good, no, it's great. As I said once, in our remote meetings, where a small group would do things kind of informally. So, election of chair. Rankin has politely declined, not, not at this time. Anybody else interested in being chairman of the Economic Development Commission?
No, I think you're.
No, I'm not. I, my job.
We should get this.
Yeah, my job, I travel, and I, there's a lot of deadlines and a lot of work, and it's just, it's not something I can do.
I mean, if I may follow up, that is my hesitation. Is I have to, you know.
Yeah.
You know, I, I, I'm aware of this, while I'm aware of what that means. And, you know, I, knowing where my interest is, I don't want to commit to anything without considering it. And being able to commit the time without. Putting it very hard.
Yeah, maybe there's a way that, when, you know, we work. Correct me if I'm wrong, but we often have comments and thoughts that are applicable to planning and zoning. We don't have a current representative to attend zoning commission. Maybe that's something for us to consider, a permanent representative, someone that can attend those meetings, maybe as a voting. I don't think they can be a voting member, but maybe as a, as a contributory member or something like that, something to think about. So I guess we're gonna table election of chair.
You have to have a chair. Somebody has to, in order to run a meeting, pardon me, Matt. You should have, the very first thing on the agenda, should have been election of a chair. So in the absence of a chair, that should be the very first thing. Someone has to be the chair. I know. I'm gonna tell you, I. As the chair of a previous board, because no one else will do it, someone has to be the chair. Some extent, so I need to. Let you get off scot-free, but it.
Will you a temporary chair?
That's a, that's a two oh, right? So you can step back from the chair at any point, but someone needs to, to take the.
Yeah, I'll, I'll chair this meeting.
Okay.
Yes. Well, I think you need to, so you need to elect the chair.
All right. I, I have a motion to elect an interim chairperson of Matt Clark.
I second.
All those in favor?
Say aye.
You're not, you're not here yet.
You have to vote.
I know, but we vote first.
Aye.
Nay.
I think.
It could have stained.
Yeah, I know.
You know, it could have caused that.
I think that you call sometimes to think about what being the chair means, and then.
Also, Erica, if you could reach out to other people and other boards and other volunteers and things like that, to see if someone who's more, more versed in these kind of areas, in the wetlands, the. The planning and zoning, someone like that, like we were interested in.
You know, I think.
I think it's small business.
Some of the folks here informed me to speak before your meeting started. This is not the first time the EDC has gone through kind of a transition. At one point, in twenty, late sixteen, twenty seventeen, the entire commission stepped away. And then as I came into office, they slowly started to come back, not for any one reason, but suddenly there are people interested in that. So I don't need to be dissuaded, because other new people aren't coming to the table. I think we've started to keep chopping up the commission, importance of the commission. And I think you asked what the role of an alternate is. You would step in to a meeting as a regular voting member in the absence of, of a full member. So if. If I were an alternate, this would be the point where you would vote me to replace the person that was absent that day, and then vote. If you're not seated as a regular, and Bill can probably speak to this from his time on the Board of Finance. He can participate in the conversation. He had all the same information as you. You just can't sway a vote. So you have to be very careful about that. And then you don't vote, unless you're seated as a full member. So a little bit less of a role, but still important, because at any time, you can be called up to the big leagues to sit and take a vote. But again, you're an advisory board, not a regulatory board, so it's a little bit priority. So you tend to be a little bit more informal. But having someone at the helm that is responsible for creating your agenda, running the meeting, is really important.
A question about the alternate. Can you only have an alternate when the board is full, or when the commission's full?
No.
Oh, okay. So they would be, like, right now, but they'd be being, like, stepping up all the time? Because.
We're at your meeting, right?
Right, 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 okay.
Potentially, yes, they can be asked to be a full voting member. But your commission is five full members, two alternates, and apparently you have no alternate. And there, there haven't been.
So we have four.
Okay, so we have an interim chair, and that was what was on, what was the wording exactly of that motion? That that was interim chair, right?
Yeah.
Yes. Yes, that's what I want.
Each of you think about it, and maybe.
Well, yeah. All right, so next item on the agenda is.
You could see how informal this is. I won't say informal.
Collegial.
And. To say that we're incompetent in certain areas. Or to question ethics. From a group that is here because we care. It's the only way I can say we care. We're involved with the town, we've been volunteering. And these two gentlemen here, Mike and John. Have been contracted by the town to help us. And they bring their expertise to the table. They tell us what are being, how it's being done in other towns, so tell us, we don't have that knowledge. There's no, there's no ethical problem. These gentlemen are doing a fantastic job. When we talked about setting up. An area that we could do special development, and they brought their expertise to the table. And I just, and I have to say this, because it bothered me that we would question the ethics of. Two very astute gentlemen. And four or five volunteers. I just, I just had to say that, because it bothers me that it would be questioned, so.
I don't know if I'm allowed to speak, so.
As long as we're all, as long as we all remain collegial, but we do wanna keep, yes, yes, and then we wanna keep to our, our agenda. Go ahead. Thank you.
We are just.
I understand your concerns. I do not, it means implied that this board was, was a mission, was a council. What I act as, as a presenting vital level of due diligence in that discussion. That was warranted of any discussion. My concerns about. I don't even wanna get into it, because this isn't the appropriate necessarily, for to get into it. But my concerns with Taiki planning policy group are not related to their work here alone. So I'll, I'll believe it at that. I believe they're very competent individuals. I believe they are very capable of serving one body with the other. You know, outside of their business interests beyond that, so.
Thank, thank you. Okay, so, it's okay, I'll move on to. Let's see, P and Z application review discussion, it has a little line here, application only. So I think the intent here is to talk about what's happening at the Planning and Zoning Commission. And Mike, you would give us a little summary of what's transpired, where we are.
Yeah, so, one of the things that I talked about with Rick when we were going over the agenda before. I knew that he wasn't actually gonna be here for the meeting, was just creating a standing item for PCC applications, period. So that you, even though they meet twice as frequently as you do, it'd be good for you to know what's on their agendas, what's on there, sort of in the hopper. So. I'll go, I'm just gonna go through and give you a, from the last agenda, what, what we have, and five words or less about each one. So. We received an application for a text amendment from. An attorney, Joe Williams, and he presented informally to the commission prior to that. They are seeking to change some texts in the regulations to adjust how we calculate lot coverage. They made it very clear in their informal presentation that there is a. Current, large industrial tenant in Wellington that is. In need of additional space, and they would like to procure a nearby parcel or. Some off-site, additional parking and other things for vehicles. So the way that our regulations are currently written, it sort of prohibits the type of site use that they're in need of. So they need to amend the text, so they've submitted an application to go through the process. That public hearing will be in November.
And the process for that is, it goes before them, there's, there's a proposal, they discuss it, then there's a public hearing, and then there's a vote.
It goes before them, and they discuss it during a public hearing. And then they close the public hearing, they can approve, deny, or approve of modifications. We have an application, which was received for zero, which is known as Zero Ruby Road, which is Ralph Toulis's parcel.
So hold on, so we're done with Williams?
Yes.
All right, thanks.
Next one, twenty-two sixteen, which is the parcel in between the on-ramp and off-ramp, and TA, Ralph Toulis owns it. So that is a development of, basically a commercial retail pad site and. Off, ancillary solar, right? So there's a small restaurant pad with parking and some solar basically surrounding the whole parcel. I had a couple of meetings with them during COVID, and they wanted to do, who's whose day? You don't have to raise your hand to talk to me, the applicant, sorry. The, the applicant is Down East Green, that's the name of the company. They wanted to do solar here, but we don't have, solar is not allowed to use in our regs, can't have the primary use of a property with solar. So we looked at what other uses are supported and the.
Thank you.
Because I'm giving you an update on what they're working. It's economic development. I'm not suggesting you need to discuss it.
No, 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 I just didn't, I just. No, 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 I just didn't, I just we never did.
Yeah, when I, like I said, when I talked to Rick, he wanted to create a better channel and so we added it as a night. And it'll stand and there may be nothing for me to give you updates on.
Well, we'll decide if it's going to stand or not stand, but. But for now.
Sounds good.
Yeah. So commercial pad site, right now they're scoping as restaurant format, probably would. They haven't mentioned a tenant of any kind, but because our regs don't allow just solar, we um had them evaluating what else they thought would be supported there. So that's where that is. The public hearing is open. They go before wetlands next week and then the commission planning zoning can go from there. Um. P Z twenty-two dash seventeen, which is a special permit for cannabis retailer at eleven Phelps Way. Um. So that um application was. Public hearing was opened and continued to the next meeting, uh which would be two weeks from Tuesday. Uh, I think it's eleven one or um.
Oh, let me go there.
That is um for the two tenant spaces on the right portion of the plaza, you're facing it from the right. Um.
For the bank used to be?
Yep. Correct.
Drive through?
No. Uh, I don't want to let the state uh. So that one will was continued um. And the only other one that's still being considered is the one that um. Uh, Jim mentioned, Mr. Marshall mentioned, which is his application twenty-two thirteen, which is a text amendment. To make modifications to the strategic development zone. Um, everything else is. More or less closed or about composed.
So that, so that, so that'll be voted on by planning and zoning, right? Mr. Marshall's thing.
Dog, yep.
Okay, and I think we we have a copy of that here, right?
Do.
All right, so I get to that and um. Uh, so that, is that four or no, it's five? That's all of them, right?
Yeah, so should we discuss now?
Yeah.
Well, I just, I wanted to actually, I don't know if we should discuss. I have no idea. I wasn't a part of that discussion. Because I was late because I forgot about the meeting. So I had no, I have no idea what was discussed. Um, I didn't read it. I don't have technical language. And I didn't watch the videos. So I don't really know what was discussed, but um I think that. My basic understanding of it, you have it. So it's just that it's basically creating um. Uh, a situation that makes it less, that puts some restrictions so that a huge, so we don't have to deal with it properly again. So we don't have this humongous center, something, you know, to that effect, which I guess I thought that the way that it was. Set up so that. Planning and zoning would have the final word, that it was already sort of like set up to protect us. That's how I perceived it, but I heard that it is possible for them to come back and say, no, you didn't follow your own rules or something like that. So I think that there, you know, is a need to try to get something. I don't know how everyone else feels. Some of us were. Um, felt differently about the logistics center, but um, which does, that makes it hard when you're on a. Good group, and you're not on the same page about everything, but um.
Well, that's why there's differences, I think, that's okay.
No, and that's fine. I do think it's nice when we present like unified front, but at the same time, we all represent different areas of interest and we all are. I think an important part of the puzzle, you know, of of the commission and even our our uh. What we bring.
Right.
But um, so yeah, I mean, I think, but for me, I mean, but again, I don't want to discuss it. I don't know if your issue with us was that we discussed, it was discussed at all. Or that it wasn't the way you like it being discussed, I don't really know. Or that you felt that it wasn't in front of us, which I think is a completely valid point. You shouldn't be discussing something if you don't really know the details or whatever. But um. I don't know how everybody else feels, but I am in support of that. I was horrified about that logistics center. I was so, I was just so upset that it was. I mean, one of the things I took in one of my classes that I took, it's amazing, really good value, but I, one thing about Connecticut is we have a lot of open space. And we did like hedonic pricing model for our homes and everything like that and.
Wait a minute.
Hedonic. Hedonic pricing models, like when you build things in like open space or clean air into the. Uh, you do a regression model and you, you know, you're able to find out like how that impacts the pricing of your house. So that's one of the things that Connecticut has, that will make us, no matter what people complain about and everything like that, but we have a lot of open space and it. Helps Connecticut, you know, relative to other New England states, it helps us to. I don't know, remain desirable. And I think that's one of the things that people felt in Wellington is makes that very desirable to have that. So I think that even from an economic standpoint, it should be considered, even when the. You know, to to create a situation where something that large would not be welcomed. And I guess I didn't really understand the the writings and how it was written. Because I do not, I do not agree with something that large at all.
I, so I, what I will say, I don't necessarily think it's appropriate to discuss the application. Here.
Okay.
Planning and zoning, what I'm gonna say. Is that Mike didn't mention that they did best a uh. They did recommend to be. Moving forward of the moratorium, um proposal for the S D Z, for the use of the S D Z. So I think we'll be wanting to have opportunity potentially for this. Instruments we weigh in upon.
To find, to find.
There should, that there will and should be opportunities for this one. So I think it will.
I'm also.
No, um. Yeah, I don't, um, uh, so regarding that the P and Z application review discussion um process, this kind of thing. What I'd like to know, um, if you do these things in the future, which we, which we think we might want to do. I'd like to know exactly what this means for, I mean, when do we estimate actual money revenue to the, to the, to the town? I mean, I know that it's very, very difficult, but I'd like to know, it's like, okay, uh, so and so wants to do this, the, 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 an expansion of his parking lot. But you know, things like that. We have grand lists that stagnated and and, you know. That means that especially in inflationary times, we're gonna, you know, all of our individual taxes are going to go up. And so I don't know when that happens, but. Um, it would be nice to to have some kind of, is that something that gets up?
So we um do have that built in and was part of the S D Z application for the warehouse. We don't typically get any type of fiscal impact analysis. So with a warehouse, there's a report, I could show you just what one would look like. Um, and I forget. Then the the high and low on that was three to four million with a potential. One million offset for costs. Um, and I don't remember exactly what that was. There was some firefighting and other things, but moving from that.
Was it two point three million in that?
No, two point three for the bank, yeah. Um, so. One of the things that we probably could do, it's not something that P and Z really gets into, but I think it is important here. I could probably work out with the assessor some type of.
Um, plus or minus a couple hundred thousand, just so that we have an idea.
But maybe I can get this sort of the formula so that we can. I don't have to ask for every time. If we just understand the principles, we can sort of apply approximate per square foot or whatever.
Yeah.
So, yeah, I can.
A rough idea.
What's, what are you saying? You're you're looking for a rough idea of what the tax net revenue is going to be?
Yeah.
Yeah, I just feel like, you know, even with you were bringing up. Two point three million dollars. Do not agree. Does that include hedonic how home pricing? And how that'll lower people's home values and then it'll lower that techno, it's. I mean, you have to understand also that I, that is my area of study is called causal evaluation. So to say whether this. Actually impacts this, it's, there's so much that would go into it. And there's always some unintended factor, uh, like, I mean, unaccounted for and spurious factors and unintended consequences. I think it's a good starting point, but I would hate to see the commission start to like rest on something like that. As a way to like about, just to evaluate. You know what I mean? Like, we cannot use that as an evaluative tool, but if it's not that accurate.
Yeah, I'm just, I'm just saying.
An idea.
An idea.
It's an idea.
That doesn't necessarily.
But if we make it a standard habit of taking this formula and plugging something in, then we are sort of casually accepting that formula. That's, that's, I just want to say that.
Um, if you, if you read our mission statement. The part that says the E D C will seek to promote development. That provides goods and services, employment opportunities. Tax revenue compatible with the community's character and vision for the future.
Mm-hmm.
So I think part of the understanding is we need to understand not only what. Projects and and I know the final line is, and most importantly, supporting the efforts of local business to provide. So we, we need to look at. From the, from a plan standpoint. What we're working on from a development standpoint and all those. Various five or six criteria and then also understand. Like our temporary chairman just said, because man. That with inflationary pressures right now. Where is the town that from five to ten years? We just had a mill rate increase of four point two five percent.
No, no. Wasn't even that.
But was.
It's just over one. Just over, just over a mill, it wasn't, it wasn't one.
But I know I ended up here at four point two five.
Oh, I'm sorry. I'm sorry, I didn't change that part.
Yeah. And that's going to continue to trend.
Yes.
So we have to look at alternate sources of revenue, if I'm right now, correctly, it's been two years since I've been on the board or the finance. But. We get money from the state for education, which I believe is about sixty-five percent of our education budget. And we have real estate town.
And in business town.
And business.
And that's one of the businesses.
And we have a capital program that was a little bit underfunded and. We have a volunteer fire department that may require more employees, volunteers don't show. There's a lot of trends in town that we need to be fully aware of. As we. Try to live up to our mission statement. And some of them. May not be acceptable. Okay, we're going to live up to it, but again, I agree with you with what you're saying, but we need to look at the. And.
The big picture.
The revenue associated with running the town as part of.
I think we need to look at revenue, but I think that the part that we disagree on there is what is community character? And I think that's where the difference is, because that is part of the charge, is to make sure that it's within the character. And then, you know, it's like.
Interesting, I'm sorry.
Who define, you know, who's defining that and how are we define, we define it differently?
Yeah.
You know, and I think that, and I think that's, I mean, that's okay. I, I don't know, maybe we disagreed about. The super sector. I don't disagree in with any industrial development whatsoever, so on. Be, not because I want it, but because of what you're saying, and I know it's true. I just know it. So I didn't, I'm just pointing out when I'm saying that with looking at these numbers. Reason I was speaking passionately about it is because what ends up happening sometimes is that people end up leaning on stuff like that and then they stop using. Like the powers of analysis and then it gets us to.
I want to tell them.
Okay.
Reminder, that doesn't go in the notes.
Anyway, so, yeah.
Okay. Um, so uh. Are there any, I mean, we've, we've now covered what, three or four different items?
Mm-hmm.
We're halfway through our discussion, maybe almost.
Yeah.
Are there any items that you guys, based on what we just talked about, you think we should have on our next agenda? Um, that we can put in here for for discussion next time? Character, um nominating committee, um future planning.
Well, I think one of the things you brought up that we do need to discuss is potentially using some of our small budget to hire somebody to take the notes. We had talked about Kelsey potential.
About some some town conversations that include your board, board of finance, planning and zoning, the board's election. And and our, you know, our vision as a group and then open that up to the.
I think, I'm, I'm, by the way, I'm, we're, we're going to agree a hundred percent violently.
Yeah, and then open that up to, to the townspeople from there, because that term. Is subjective and it does mean something very different to everyone else.
Cool.
For each person and maybe each project, right? I think we heard overwhelmingly in public. One side of the warehouse that are, there are plenty of people that came into this building on the other side. And as I reminded the regularly, your voice came part of the conversation if you don't direct it to the, to the right areas. And it'd be part of a public record. And and so I think. We, we had to have a, a talk of the town, kind of media, um, not necessarily maybe a state of the town and then, you know, where we see our future going. And and what we consider to fall into those aspects and then start having some public discussions, real, real public dialogue.
And I think a little backdrop or background material to, 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 you know, the planning is what is it? It's here's where we are now.
Yeah.
Here's what the world is going to look like down the road. And here's how we get from where we are to where we want to be.
Right.
Yeah, but.
Well, maintain it.
But a discussion just on character of town.
It, it, that's where it starts. And it, it, you can get to some of what that character of town, you're never going to be able to answer that with one, one common goal, right? But if there's an overall vision and plan for our town, and we all know that changes depending on who's at the table in those different areas, which is why you start there. But the public, the greater public is really where you need to hear from.
Hmm.
Um, we need to hear from as a town. I want to hear from what direction we want to go in. You know, I think we all want to see some growth. I don't know that anyone wanted that massive growth right now. That was evident, right? That wasn't for us and it didn't fit into our, our characters.
I know.
Can I, I apologize, I have, I have number one agenda on that meeting. Can I just tell you as you move to the break, we have nine, uh, seven of the. Thirteen applications complete documents we haven't signed yet, so.
Thank you for attending, I appreciate it. Um, so, yeah.
I think that if you. Go to a bunch of people, you're going to get, well, again, the cause will have to say, you're going to get a bunch of random fitted. I think that it's pretty clear that people didn't want that. And yes, there were some people that might have. And they didn't speak, I mean, they, they went, I heard a couple of people saying like, I don't have a problem with this. Their voice wasn't as loud, you know? They clearly didn't care as much as people who did care. So I think that that, what she's saying, I feel like is redundant. To when something goes before the planning and zoning or somebody doesn't like something, we sure as heck hear about it. And we don't hear as much about what people want, but we do. I'm sorry, I didn't want to say something, but you know that story of um Chicken Little? You know, Chicken Little, no, Chicken Little, no, that's a sky falling. I'm thinking of the other chicken, the chicken who makes the bread and he goes, I'm going to make the weed and I'm going to do this. Penny Penny, and I'm going to do this and I do, and who wants to help me do this and who wants to help me bake the, you know what I'm talking about? Like, oh my God. Who wants to help me grow the wheat? Who wants to help me do this? Who wants to help me eat the bread? Oh, me, me, me. Everybody wants to help eat the bread. So people are constantly saying, I would develop this and oh, we should just have small businesses. Oh, wouldn't it be nice to have a little restaurant down at Phelps? Market or where, like, they don't even remember, like, I remember when Phelps Market was a field, okay, like the original Phelps Market. I don't know if anyone else.
Definitely not me.
You guys haven't been here that long? No, no Santilli, that didn't exist. That was where we used to tent for Girl Scouts. The Lox own that, the Phelps, the Lox. You know, they own that whole land. Down where the river and the rail is, was the original Phelps Market. It was a little tiny market and Mr. Phelps would. Give us penny, you know, five cent candy and stuff like that. So. Yes, I remember when we, that came, but nothing stayed there. We can't keep a little coffee shop alive or a little restaurant. So like, it's easy for people to talk, but they're, you know, they're not. They're not supporting those businesses. They'll drive to Dunkin' Donuts rather than the little restaurant next door and have an issue. I know, they just complain about it.
All right, so um.
So I don't, I don't want their input. I want their action.
Yes, so.
Let's say.
Can I comment? Yeah, go ahead.
Sure.
I just wanted to tell you, it's been wonderful just to be able to listen to all of this, just reading the minutes like that.
Mm-hmm.
I'm very impressed. Very impressed that you're balancing open space with other. But I will tell you, next time you go to one of the state parks or you go to a national park. That was set up because somebody took it on the chin. Somebody paid a little bit more in taxes. Somebody went without something. And so in order to have what you want, there are going to be sacrifices. It's not, not every project is going to bring in money you would like. But maybe money is in the ulterior motive. If you're talking about that little restaurant in the soul and going into that ten acres. That is right up there near the truck stop. That's been abandoned for years and it would be a good place for them. So it's like looking at the spot and is it going, is it useful for anything else? You're not going to put houses in there or in school or anything like that. Yeah, so that, that, you know, that's the kind of thing that I think would, would help us out a lot. But again, it's smaller, it will bring in. And it will help you count out. But to look and see something that's going to bring in a million dollars. But to look and see something that's gonna bring in a million dollars or two million dollars, maybe you're worried. You may be sacrificing too much to get it and realize those big warehouses, they're a trend. A lot of the companies, you know, their companies are using them, some of them are backing off. So, you know, if something looks trendy, take a close. A very close look because it's like decorating your kitchen, no matter what you do, your kitchen did eight, ten years, it's gonna look good.
That one, my kitchen looks the way it looks?
Wait, wait a couple of years, you know, come back.
I figured my age too. You're gonna say an old lady's house, they don't, but anyways, I wanna thank you, you guys are great.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Yeah, you're really great, we try to, I'm very appreciative. Bill's gonna be appreciative if I get home and get dinner on the day.
Thank you.
So we're, we're ready.
Thank you very much.
Is that your jacket behind you?
So we're done with the P and Z.
Oh, I'm sorry, you wanted to say something and I didn't wanna. I just kept going.
I wish Erica was here, but she was a little, she was kind of alluding to it. You know, you have to look. Five to ten years down the road and see what. Where the momentum is from a cost standpoint to maintain the. Atmosphere that we want in our, in this town. It's, it's important. When it comes to cost. And the cost is, is bared by the people who want. And as between inflation and buying equipment and health benefit programs. Employees, new school and all those things that make this an attractive place to live. Is going to continue to escalate in cost. Now, if we continue to pump up the mill rate. The people, your real estate will be worthless and people will not be moving in town because of the mill rate. So we need to find ways to balance the. Type of life that we want, the character of this town and what it takes to operate. Now, you know, it, it's somewhere near nineteen million dollars, that's the operating budget right now. And non-school offering is nine four, nine, non-school, right, alcohol, yeah. And, and that's gonna, you know, it's gonna continue to escalate. And we've gotta find a way in combination of small businesses, the small businesses don't, don't exist too long, we don't have a track. And we don't have, we got six thousand people, we got twenty-eight hundred households, of which eighty-five percent of them are occupied by two people. Which scared the hell out of me when I saw that, I'm sorry, scared the head out of me. But we really need to look at this.
We need to look at the macro numbers too, and that, that has to do with population growth, we ain't growing at all. Um, and inflation, we're now looking at, at eight or nine percent inflation for the next couple of years and then it's gonna taper down from there. And income, this is a low income town.
I know.
Yes, we have an, an income that is, what, our car was like Bridgeport. I know that's not nice to say and people get angry when I say it, but it's true, drive the, drive the backroads of, of, of Wellington, take a look around. We have, we have this and we have this. You know, raising the, raising taxes too much is a real hardship on a lot of people. Anyway.
Good discussion, immigration.
I mean, I have definitely understand, we don't wanna raise taxes, but like, one of the things that you're saying is like, we have a lot of households of two people. Well, what I've considered, now, Talon is a town that has extremely high taxes and yet they're populating, it's grown because people love that school. They like the new schools, I'm not. For building a new school necessarily, I mean, I haven't seen. The whole circumstance because I just think to myself, when my house is hemorrhaging and bleeding, I don't turn around and go buy a new. You know, car, like, you know what I'm saying, so I don't really understand that, but I also do think. That we have to, we, do we know what attracts, you have an idea of what would attract the right type of people in town? I always think, I don't understand why we don't have more Yukon dollars. Like, it just makes no sense to me, they go down to Willimantic, they go to, you know, the Hoot, they go to, um. Yeah, they go to Mansville, they go to the, the Mansfield Mall, but it's just as far from there as it would be to come up to where we are. So like, I never understand, you know, like, why, where that money's going, why they go down to, like, TJ, whoa.
Time's up.
Yeah, I'm just saying, like, I would love to harvest the Yukon dollar.
Working in the dark.
You know, and I think, well, where to tell and get that from, some of it is from like the sleepy, the, the bigger, the bigger things that they have. Obviously, that's where they're getting a lot of their revenue from, but we don't, where would we put something like that? And the same people that complain are the same people that don't go to Santilli's, like, they won't go to that store, they don't buy anything there, so. I don't, I don't know, like, that's what I think the people are thinking with the school, let's get a new school and that'll attract people and they'll wanna come and they'll wanna have their kids be here, but. What I liked about the town, when, you know, I mean, obviously I grew up in this town, but I was proud to raise my kids here. It's the people in this town that I think make this town what it is, we have got nothing really going for us, like, in terms of businesses or like anything, it's. But it's the, the community. You're one of them though.
I moved here six years ago. I, I, I moved here because it's a rural town.
Yeah.
We, we looked at houses in Thailand and Wellington and when Rick, whenever Rick ever said, we're gonna go look at a house in Wellington, I go, I'm not living in Willimantic. I could sell winter my whole life, I've never even heard of Wellington, but it was, it was the difference in the taxes with what. What Sam said between Thailand and Wellington, I was like, wait, what? That's for the year? And we have almost three acres, are you kidding me? Like, yeah.
All right, all right, so we need to move on.
But we.
Our, so we want, next thing is ARPA update, and I think the first selectman just gave, uh, an update to you.
Yeah, well, um, so choose, so, uh, we are in process, we've accepted seventeen applications. And are in process of contracting, we got the contract documents approved through the attorney. Um, and so I've been reaching out and communicating with all the, the recipients to get the contract signed, get their copy of their W nine. Um, to the first selectman's office, I think nine of them, so we're still waiting on, on. Uh, no, seventeen, what's eight, so we're waiting on eight. Um, and then the selectmen will start cutting checks hopefully early November and we will work with her office on appropriate publicity, you know, some. Griffin grabs, uh, written grabs, you know, for opportunities for, for rolling out the grants, but. Um, so the total, uh, outlay will be two hundred and thirty thousand dollars in business resilient support of the three hundred. Of the three hundred that we originally requested.
Didn't we do a second one, sorry?
We did not.
Oh, so we didn't do a second round of it, we're just gonna cut it off here?
We did, and the, the. I don't know what you call the trouble with, we don't have any additional means of trying to grab a new audience then. We leveraged all the communication, all the business list, the only thing we could do, we would have to do like a direct mail, which. Yeah, I think we were, we were confident that the word got out.
Yeah.
And the, and the, the, the application period was, I think, for months.
Yep.
And have we, have we had any complaints about this, any, any problems, any issues?
Yeah, I mean, a couple of the people aren't getting funded, we're not upset, we're not happy, and, and the one example I'll give you. Was, um, we received, um, an application both from, so this was for businesses or nonprofits. So we received an application from the Wellington Library, which is a nonprofit. We also received an application, which we, we're approving. Um, we also received an application from the Friends of the Wellington Library, which is a nonprofit that is entirely existing to support the Wellington Library. And they don't have staff or budget and we're not actually. Adversely affected because they don't have staff, right? So, we basically decided that we would not double dip that, we would just fund the library directly. The Friends of Wellington Library, we're unhappy with.
Yeah, but they have to show negative impact, so they can't, so what do they say, well, we didn't get as many donations or something, I think, what kind of negative? Wasn't there somebody who had to come back around with you, was that the seventeenth person, remember there was?
So there was one, um, that also looked like it was a business that was, I couldn't find any business registration details.
Yeah, yeah.
And so I was circled back with them and, and we were able to clear that up.
Oh, good.
Yeah.
Great, that's awesome. So should we, as, um, should we? And that was great, and you guys, thank you so much for doing, for handling all those people, I'm like writing that stuff, cuz that was. Yeah, thank you so much.
Other than fielding questions and having.
I know, but also being, like, I just, you know, not, when I spaced out.
Oh, yeah. They have been, they have been very long, um, the one thing that I'll note that we didn't really discuss is that, um. We made the decision, once we got the applications, uh, we worked with the Towns Land Use Council to develop the contracts and legal agreements for the money. Um, so that was vetted by, by Helen Sage, they reviewed those, um, so it wasn't just, give us your information, we'll send you the check. You could, send me a copy of that, will you, that, that.
The temple contract?
Yeah.
And then do your account name, after you're heading down.
Yeah, so the. We'll have to request the funds, yeah, we were, like, the state was very delayed in actually providing funds. Like, our second tranche funding came in ten days ago. Um, so the town didn't really have all of the ARPA funds, and so a lot of the projects are, been on hold. And for a period of time, Harper didn't allocate new dollars because we didn't have the money, um, and they didn't wanna. It was, but the money came in multiple installments, and so ARPA was trying to make sure that we didn't have more allocated than actual funds. So it got a little bit crazy, but the town.
And then they were opening back up, they opened up for applications after, uh, ten days ago, I remember we discussed, holding until we got the check. Now, question for the commission is, we had had discussion about, since we are not using the total amount allocated. We could put in a separate request, it doesn't have to be for seventy thousand or anything like that, but I'm just saying. That I don't know what new request have come in, cuz I wasn't there Monday, you know what I mean?
We have.
Million, ton.
Three.
Yeah.
Which total ninety-one thousand dollars, which is, you know. We will have more requests to town. Board of Education, wait a minute, this is for business?
Kind of talking about ARPA, because what I'm saying is. I was talking about ARPA in general, because what has happened is, they allocated all of the money from the beginning, when we were in the early allocation. And then they were putting up holds on the, you know how the application process was open, people could go online and apply, okay? And we were one of those people, and then the businesses applied to us, the businesses didn't apply directly, and if they did, they were, they were pushed over to talk to us. And the brick program, so then, so they. Were opening up the application process, they had closed it because they had enough requests, and that, now that, so they just opened it up again. And we hadn't, like, um, we had loosely talked about it, but we never talked about creating another formal proposal. Now it's open.
From the economic development.
Correct, if we wanted to do anything, now would be the time, because it's just been opened again ten days ago to submit another request. But we don't really have anything specific, the only things that we were, uh, thought fell under the final rule were. The water study, we talked about that, and then we talked about, um. What do we do with like internet access, I don't remember if we talked about that here or there, because I get confused, yeah, broadband, but would, I don't remember if we talked about that here. I don't think so.
I brought, I brought it up in the last meeting. It's one of the original, that's one of the original purposes of this.
It absolutely is, even when we, as our folks talked about it, it would have been. Too expensive to get, get that, where needed to go, we'll take all the funds that we got.
The state is also putting in a lot of money, both state and federal, uh, for a rural broadband initiative that they're in process of sort of doing the base mapping on right now.
Right, good.
So, so.
This money actually has to be spent, when's, when's the date, the one that needs to be spent?
ARPA is what, twenty twenty-four?
You gotta come to an ARPA meeting for that.
Gotta be allocated and then spent.
Yeah, allocate and spend is different, it's gotta be allocated, is by a certain date is more of the. Like six months from now, maybe, it's a while. I think that you should go to the ARPA meeting for that part.
From an economic development perspective, um, there's nothing that would help our town more than a water study for that South, South Wellington District and. Um, broadband access, we have bedroom people all over, all over the place, especially now, and a lot of them don't have broadband.
Would the condition like me to put together a proposal for ARPA?
So, so what I wanted to say is November first is the, is the deadline to submit, you won't meet again, so you have to figure out what to submit prior to that date. Gee whiz.
I mean, up to, I think both, both are certainly worthy, I would know for rural broadband, like, there, there is an entirely set. The set of state and federal money that is going to be spent on rural broadband, so we, you know, if. Also, in this case, I, I'm not to put my phone on this here, but I'm, I, I think if you're looking at. Uh, using Wellington ARPA money on a, a, a public water system, uh, study or rural broadband. Rural broadband, I think, is going to get funded in a, in a different channel and would, would encourage you to maybe. I mean, I sure is, anything that the, the government says they're going to put money into.
Yeah, this, this is, this is money, this is money in the bank, you know, it's, it's happened, we have, just a question.
We have it, but I don't understand, we don't have that much, it's not allocated enough to address the situation. We, to be honest with you, I mean, I don't know enough about it, but when we had brought it up at the beginning of the meeting, those who. At the beginning of ARPA, when we talked about broadband, people had said, this is too, that would be too. Expensive for what we're allotted. So that it wouldn't touch everyone and that we'd get into like, oh, how are we gonna do this and that, and same thing with the water station, it's not gonna be enough to. Bring water in and all this, but it's gonna, it's gonna, it's gonna get, it's gonna engineer, it's gonna get your foot in the door of looking at it, and the water. I think that coronavirus passed through the sewer systems, and that's why that's in a, it was, it was present in people's waste. And that's why they were allowed, it's true, it's true.
I, I'm just wondering if you.
No, because why would that?
People got it, or that's how we knew about it?
No, that's how it is an ARPA related issue, it's literally, it's literally one of the four, uh, or I think five. Broad umbrella areas, that, one of them is water.
So, uh, just.
So the question is, do we wanna do a proposal on water?
Yeah, anecdotally, um, when the warehouse project was submitted. And talking with some of the fire folks and extra fire marshal who's no longer, there was obviously a concern about what do we do? How do you put a fire out and, and you don't know the extent of what they're gonna propose and how adequate that's gonna be. So I, I talked to Connecticut Water and I have, um, they, they were very late to remind me, but. I have estimates of what it would take to run water, um, so we, we know generally, run water. Bring water through from where it would need to be, where it is to where we need to go. Um, I work in Talon and Talon has their water system, so I sat down with them and I said, what's the, you know, we've got water coming right out of, right by the tavern. And, and the fact of the matter is Talon is not interested in water coming from Talon to Wellington. Um, they don't want to operate this, and they have now not interested in having Wellington be a customer, so that's dead. So we had to figure out where it would come from, the answer was one ninety-five. Um, and basically to run the main that would be necessary to service all of South Wellington Village to River Road Park. It was about fifteen million bucks, you need a pump station, that's like one point two, so, so, uh, Connecticut Water, I have those estimates. Be happy to, to share them, they're just preliminary estimates on an Excel sheet that, that they did for, for me. But I needed to have a sense of the viability of that, because one of the things that kept coming up was fire suppression and. Doesn't matter now, but we still have the info.
So it was Talon, not Stafford.
Uh, technically the Mansfield. Well, so no, that Talon has a system that comes right out of the Willimantic, that's certain, that they have some community wells that service a small area there. They pay Connecticut Water to operate them, but they have a diversion permit from the river. That, um, they operate and is active, so this, the lowest cost solution would be to come and grab from that diversion permit, span the permit. And bring it, because water already comes up that.
So, and the benefit of this to, um, development of South Wellington Village is that we would have. Um, you know, water instead of well water, um, and what does this mean for wastewater, does it mean anything for wastewater?
No, so that, that's the one piece of it, from a, an optics standpoint, a lot of, um. Uh, and Bill might be able to speak to this better than me, there are a lot of tenants that aren't interested in buildings that aren't connected to water from a, an insurance perspective. The idea that the bill is gonna catch. The school is on water, so they ran a tiny main up that. the school is on water. So they ran a tiny main up that turn right. They went down thirty-two and connected the school. But it's not sufficient.
Also.
Correct, yep. But it's not sufficient to support anything. So this was gonna bring a twelve inch main up one ninety-five. We would need to provide a pump station and it would.
And, and, but the, and the immediate benefit to the townspeople would be only the potential for future development of South Wellington.
Well, it would have provided enough, that with the twelve inch main and the pump station, it would have provided enough capacity to service everybody in between. And then, and then expand from there. We would never be able to go up seventy-four.
Is there any, is there any, uh, we're getting far afield, I apologize. Is there, is there any, uh, problems with, with, um, um, chromatic contamination in South Wellington?
So one of the other things that we, we don't have data on that, that I'm aware of, sort of on a widespread basis. We have the small pocket right by Dunk and Donuts from the DOT garage, which this would have, right. But there are a number of community water systems where people are community wells. Um, like, for example, the well system and water system at the mill is not great, right? They were the name of the connect. So we mapped for Connecticut Water where those community well ser- services were to show them. The other point I want to make to your question is, while not a direct benefit, because we're not providing sewer, by providing water, we take away the separating distance that needs to be between a well and a septic. And so you have a seventy-five foot radius.
You, you increase your potential of, uh, more intense, higher density development.
Though.
And mixed use.
We also talked about the rail, the rail project and running up seventy, thirty-two would help develop the rail project we have. So it was, it was, we were looking at a number of different ones.
Also, um, according to the final rule, I think that you can take, um, was it ten point two million dollars, uh, as? I think it's up to ten million dollars you can take as uh, revenue loss. Any municipality can take that. We didn't even receive ten million dollars. So right off the bat, you can just say, we're gonna take this as revenue loss. And then you can honestly, you can do whatever you want. I mean, you can just say, we're gonna.
The true restrictions of spending money are about, quite a bit less than.
Right. And then I had mentioned that in the meeting. I mean, I read it. And I mean, I'm a student of public policy. I thought, I think I had a pretty good understanding of it. Somebody had said, oh, um, no, you still have to kind of, you know, I think for the sake of being moral and everything, you know, and being, when they're talking about, oh, let's just fund this, let's just fund that. I have never agreed to that. I don't vote with these pet projects. I just don't vote.
By the way, good job on, on, I mean, I watched a couple of things.
Yeah, I go a couple of times. I have been, not been there. I mean, I was gone the whole entire summer. I tried to resign. They were like, no.
That seems to be a true.
I know I wanna keep, but then I say, so I, I mean, I do, I did, I did a good job getting the money, the three hundred thousand dollars. So thank you. But after that, I kind of like fell off a little bit. I did my job. And I just, like, I'm not there anymore.
Not, not the goose thing, but are you, are you interested in, in either by consensus or a motion to, to pursue a little additional engineering funding?
So I wanted to pause on that and pick really the commission's brain on the discussion you've had more globally is, we need to figure out what, we can figure out cheaply where we want to go from a, what are people's opinions perspective, right? We can, we can talk to the public and do outreach. All those are easier to ascertain. But where are we headed financially? And where's the market? I'm just wondering if there should be more of a discussion around pulling together some more strategic analysis.
Yeah, I have some opinions on that. I think we could put it on the agenda. That's not, that's not a short term thing. We should put it on the agenda. We should all prepare for, for our next meeting and I'll.
What? For what?
For strategic planning for the town of Wellington regarding growth, development, tax rates, uh, tax, um.
Okay, okay.
Whatever.
Yep.
I just wondering if you spend money on, like, a market analysis, a growth potential analysis, a, a, you know, sort of a, a professionally prepared SWAT analysis of the town, right?
That could, that could feed, that could feed into what, what, what we're, what we're talking about.
Yeah, but I don't think, if that's thing is gonna close in ten days, we would have to, you know, have, uh, John would write something up. And then what? We, we, we don't, we wouldn't be able to vote on it. Wouldn't be able to vote on any proposal that was made.
It's more of a concept.
Do we want?
Direct us, direct us to submit a concept.
Yeah. Do we want to request money from ARPA? Or do we want to let that go? What do you think?
That's kind of difficult. But, because I don't know. I mean, I wonder what.
Yeah, I mean.
I think we're not prepared. And I think that, um, it would require, and I can just see that the way, I don't want to be like, you know, discouraging or whatever, but I feel grateful for the award that we got. There's a, I think the three hundred thousand was the largest award that was awarded. And.
Nice job. No.
Yes, it was.
No, the, 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 the fire departments went, this is off the record.
The fire department ambulance.
Recorded.
Not on the record.
It's not on the, off the record. I don't believe for an individual project. You're correct. For, for an individual project. Obviously, for different departments, I saw certain monies flowing there and whatnot. But I think because of that, it, it, it has been, my experience there has been that at this point too, I also, I don't, I don't know if anything new coming in, how well it's gonna be able to be addressed. I think people do get an idea of like, oh, this is how we're gonna spend the funds. And they kind of, and they all just kind of,
Yeah.
just go with it. As I do, I do feel that way. It's been very little dissension.
So the next application is November first?
The deadline would be November first, and that will be the final round, I believe.
So then it's gonna be totally encumbered. All of our monies will be encumbered.
All of our monies, not encumbered. I don't know what you mean by that.
We will spoken for.
Not yet.
We already have.
ARPA will still talk.
They, they've allocated, I'm gonna, I, I try to read the tracker here, but I, I can never.
I know, the tracker's a lot.
So total ARPA funds appropriated, that's, this is as of, around the end of September, was one point five million dollars. The town has one point seven million dollars.
So two hundred thousand.
But almost every, so we had two hundred and two thousand that was remaining. However, the, um, almost every project has come in on their budget. And so we have seen savings. So none of them have come in over budget.
Right.
So, like, we're gonna be returning seventy thousand?
Right.
Was, so the idea is we have more requests now than money remaining, but there will be savings. So we didn't want to bring in fifteen new applications and potentially only now.
Yeah, I get it.
So the.
Right. I have a new proposal, actually, right, Rob. How about this? What if we, because one of the things I would like to add to the agenda is, a lot, like I said, a lot of people are really interested in talking about small businesses. And it would be great if you would be able to attend. But a lot of people have a lot of good ideas and somebody, well, you said the most important sentence is the last one. How do we support the, how do we support the existing businesses? Of course, I know that, you know, there's that many things that we've talked about doing. We talked about having a welcome onboard package, you know, just all kinds of different, you know, resources for them. And it just takes time. And it's like, I'm energized right now. Like, I don't know why, but I'm like, Jeff, I want to do things, maybe because we are meeting a person for the first time. Makes me want to bring back those, uh, you know, graphic design skills and things like that and communication and just talk to those, you know, figure out a way we could support. So what if we did? I don't know. I was saying, what if we did a proposal where we were requesting funds to be able to not necessarily do an analysis, but yeah, kind of like do an analysis to, or to create these communications materials using the fact that so many small businesses were hurt and that small businesses tampered, tamped down right now. Like, uh, you know, do, do you see what I'm saying? Like, not a lot of people are gonna start it because of the impact, economic impact of COVID that continues.
So encouraging startups, is that what you're thinking or?
I'm thinking of actually just requesting money to be able to even do an analysis, um, of of, well, what, like what you were talking about. Like, what is the best way, you know, to develop this corridor or something like that? Or money to hire someone like the printing and this, and to create, um, a strategic plan. Like a strategist. Like, when I work for an organization and we developed a strategic plan, we used like a consulting company. And then we worked with them to develop them. All right, it's fine. You don't have to like the idea.
I'm, I'm thinking about it and I'm like, you know.
Well, I just felt like that would be a smaller amount of money than, and also, it, to me, it fit right in because I do think that people are not taking risks right now. I don't think you're having tons of people starting up a small business now, given what has happened with, with COVID. And I think that it's just created, it'll create more of that division where, and since we want to develop that type, I just thought we could look into that. I'm only thinking about it in the sense of, it is true, not to be like a money grabber, but you know, there are phones that are available right now. And other people are sure gonna jump on it and grab for them, for sure.
And, and, and I think when Bill mentioned like three meetings or four meetings ago, you know, wrong planning for the town of Wellington. If you'll remember, I was so shocked that he didn't say anything. In the next meeting, I said, this is exactly what we need as a town. Um, right now, all, here's what we do. We just, we, we total up the bills. And, you know, from all the different departments, including the education and all that sort of thing. And I don't think there's much of a, they say that they, they prioritize and all that sort of thing. Okay, fine. And then, and then you argue about the bottom line. Um, and that's not, I, I don't, you know, the Republicans argue, oh, no, no increase, no increase, no increase. And the Democrats argue, it's not enough, it's not enough, it's not enough. Well, why don't we provide a backdrop for that and say, here's where we are as a town. Here's where, where everybody thinks our services are. Here's what, what's happening to our grand list. Here's what's happening to our, our, uh, um, population. Um, and here's what our projections are for the future. So here's what we think we need to do.
Maybe you think that we should be doing that here?
I think that.
That's our scope?
We should be part of the, of it. And we should provide the background. The consultant. The demographics, the growth, the analysis of the grand list, the comparison with other towns.
The, the information, we, we both heard on more finance. And the information is there. And there's some very competent people working for the town. And to put together a five or ten year, best case, worst case, most likely can be done. And then, and then we can make, what I would say, informed decision about really with the town getting that information and the people getting that information. So they haven't informed. And I, I, that's what I heard Erica say.
Yeah.
Yeah, which is great. And you guys talked about it with respects to a job. You know, and, and, and getting a group of people together. I mean, this, this is something I think needs to be done, just so we can understand how we make decisions and why we make decisions based on, this is the plan.
Right.
And that was Rick's comment. On the, sign our letter.
That's right.
You know, sign our letter.
We need, we, we need a plan.
Yeah.
That is true. He did say that. You're really, you need a long range of events or something.
So on our break.
Yeah.
So how about we get a, get a motion together to spend some money? And make an, an application to the, uh, ARPA. Is that possible for us to do?
For a strategic economic plan?
Yeah, what, what do you guys think?
Well, that's pretty much what I'm saying.
I, you know, I'm picking up your.
We're following up on it.
Yes, yes.
Make a motion, sister.
I make a motion that we request that we put in a formal request of ARPA for funding for a strategic development plan.
Initiative.
You wanna, I put a ball figure on it, right?
Um, well, I just want to vote on the motion to submit it first.
What are, what are the groups?
Do I have a second?
Finance.
I would, I would think, so, so other than the backup of, of which we, we would be.
Wait, isn't it wrong for us to leave the motion on the table?
Right, I'd second your motion. So now we're in discussion.
Right.
So, um, I think it's the role of the, of the Economic Development Commission to provide that backup, the information, manage that process. And then gather the information from, um, you know, other groups. And we would just be, you know how, uh, you know, the consultants, how, how do they do that? They have a moderator?
Mm-hmm.
Um, and, right. So, and we would have representatives from the different groups and boards and things like that, and citizens. And, uh, you know, we present where the information and data that we have. And then we, we work through a process of, of what we're gonna develop and what, what we want to look at.
Okay, well, that's.
I think that would. I, a lot of towns have these state of the town meetings. And they have land use folks, the finance folks, the political folks, you know, whether it's town council or board selection or whatever. A lot of them, I was, I mentioned it to Erica and I mentioned it to Rick when we were on the phone. They do it right after the news. Okay, what's on your agenda for this year? Why do you? And so I was thinking about it. If you're able to prepare some of this information, perhaps the data that you pull together is the call to action to say, we have this information, we want to share it. So maybe the EDC is the host agency. And you say, we've got this data. Here's the good, here's the bad, here's sort of what it looks like down the middle.
And, and I, I believe, I, I think that's right. And we have, by and from the first selection, she already indicated this is something she's very interested in.
And you know, at the time.
Yeah, but you know.
We're pretty much at an impasse right now.
One remaining.
We're at an impasse right now with respects to the plan going forward. And this is a perfect time to do it. You know, because basically, on mission statements.
Well, I think we're definitely going through a transition with Rick, Rick, Rick having left. Also with kind of the balloon of the SDV taking off and really not kind of landing like a lead balloon to townspeople. I think that it's a time to, yeah, reconsider all of that. To take a different approach.
So, is this something, is this something we want to do?
Well, we just, we just, we didn't take a vote in it. We did a motion.
I know. We were in discussion, so.
I thought the motion involved a vote.
Well, that's after discussion, then we vote. So.
Is that right?
Is there any more discussion?
I think it's discussion.
Discussion vote.
Really? Oh, okay.
Gotta discuss the motion.
Okay.
I think you just did.
Yeah, we did.
Yeah.
Anything else? I'm, yeah?
I'm done.
Anything else?
No.
Oh, one comment. You know, you mentioned Mansfield before about Yukon.
Yukon dollars?
When FedEx, before it was FedEx and it was RPS. And when they came in the town, one of the reasons why they wanted was the Yukon student population.
Hmm.
For workforce. To work there. Because of, because of the volumes and, and, and that was, that was their primary reason. They had a workforce that they could, they could use.
These kids, they're gonna come, they don't work anymore.
Okay, so.
They just, they just.
We have a motion, we have a motion on the table. And we repeat the motion back, um.
Oh, boy, can I have mine.
I got it as a seven minute, one minute submitted application to ARPA for the development of a strategic economic development plan.
Yeah, um, information supporting, I would say. I would, would you take a, a friendly motion?
Absolutely.
Um, it, uh, uh, provide information supporting in that, uh, and the kind, because I, I don't think we want to hire a consultant, pay a hundred grand for somebody to come up with a plan for the town of Wellington. That's not what we're saying.
No, I didn't mean that.
No, no, it's okay. What?
You have one, it's a P O C D.
We have that, yeah.
Conservation development. The plan is only for, for every ten years.
Okay.
So that's what I was gonna ask you to do, because I, I, given our timeframe, just clarify what components you think should be in it so that the scope of this is more defined for when Johnson, yes, we have.
Project, current projections, income, grand list growth, um, and land, I don't know about land use, but, but, and then an analysis of our grand list.
Well, yeah, sorry, I had thought to your point, is, is there some type of a build out analysis that's included in this? What it looks like if we develop? Let, if we develop and, and beef up the grand list on an industrial side, if we beef it up sort of with small businesses, right? Because you really want to figure out how to get there. You're gonna, you're gonna see the finances, you're gonna say, oh, shoot, we need more money. So a couple of build outs. Don't you want to have three scenarios how to get there? A full residential scenario, or like, do you want any of that?
Yeah, absolutely. And, and also what that means for, for, um, you know, what the ramifications are and which one's most sustainable? So which one's last, which one's least risky?
So I think some type of analysis on how they could actually, what that would look like. I mean, some people do that from just a sprawl perspective. What would it look like if we developed all our land based upon how it's owned? But that doesn't give financials.
Well, there are, there's, could be financial problems.
Yeah, so I think.
But we don't need to, well, I guess you, you want to have details with that, that. But I think the justification for it because it is under ARPA and it has to be under an umbrella, the justification for it is to support, it is to kind of account for, um, by not having growth over the last few years of businesses, it actually functions as like a regress in a way. So to like, kind of fill that gap. Is how I would address it.
Historical data, principle. But the town has historical data. So I think you'll look at this and say, if we don't do anything different, well, how is this? You gotta know where you're at today with historical data projecting at. And then, and then you get a feel for, are we okay or we're not? And then you put some assumptions in there with regards to inflation and capital requirements and all those things that go along with new schools that's on, on, on board. I shouldn't say on the agenda. And then you come up with an idea of where you're at. And if you're in a hole, these are the sources of revenue. You know, rate increase, accommodation. That, that's, I think, what you begin to look at. We don't do anything. This is what a good look back in five to ten years from now. And this would be effective. We don't do anything, this is what it could look like in five to ten years from now, and this would be effective, and that will generate the conversation on board. With regards to possible revenue for it to come, and it give us the business, it'll give us. The basis of information to make decisions on on certain project.
Right.
So is that enough information for you to? We don't necessarily wanna do the build out scenarios, but we don't, do we need to really put that in the application? I mean, I think we.
No, I I was actually thinking about it, la, a couple of weeks ago, we were at the Southern Union Planning Conference, we met this gentleman who who gave a presentation. And was really interesting, he's based out of Mass, and he, that he he has a pro forma evaluation tool, which is a bunch of spreadsheets, and you plug in costs and you do this. And he works with developers to figure out things pan out. So as part of that, we set up my, I actually did, I didn't get rivals, you sat in on it, and our, our colleague Steve basically gave a presentation to Taiki. And then shared his development. Docs with us and showed us how to use them um, to plug in the numbers and what the formulas are, who evaluated multifamily, residential and industrial. And from our perspective, we wanna use it so that we can determine if a developer says, this isn't viable unless I have a tax agreement, well, we can basically run the numbers ourselves and determine it. But I'm wondering if if that process with him, if he would be willing to sort of just move himself to the other side of the table. And run the the analysis in reverse to give them the rest of it.
Yeah.
I mean, this is, this is, this is more, oh, it's more timeline and projection, that would, yeah, a development analysis.
I just think that, I just think we can discuss the details of it later, and also, a lot of people that. I mean, this isn't necessarily my exact area, but a lot of people that I, I forgot how my degree do. They do consulting and stuff like that, so it's not something that I couldn't, you know.
I I think I have this scared what you guys are willing to do.
Like with that projection, I believe we do that with more. We took them over the ten years, the twenty years, uh, the thirty years, or just took all the spreads.
Sam, you're going to, you're, so you're going to, when's the next um? Then, when's the next uh?
Well, they're, they submit this, and then it just gets on the agenda, so what, it's two weeks from now with the next meeting?
Uh, two weeks from Monday.
Yeah.
Do they still do those meetings in the middle of the day, like at twelve?
Yeah.
Uh, one thirty, what's that mean, one thirty? I think, don't get me started, don't get me started.
Well, now, I'm only asking that question now because in all honesty, I'm supposed to be her alternate for ARPA, but as you guys all know with my new work schedule.
Right.
It's not like I, it's not like I can say, I can, you know what I mean?
You all know I'm not gonna be a secretary.
No, I'm talking about.
No, no, I know what I'm just saying, no.
So we have, we have a motion on the table. So let's vote. All those in favor say aye.
Aye.
Aye. We both unanimous, we don't need to roll.
Fine, how much is the request gonna be for? How much money do you wanna request?
That's a good question, isn't it?
Yes, it is.
How, how can we approve?
I just, I just mean that um. I just meant that I, that's why I suggested that we hire a secretary, because you're too stressed out with work to be doing this, and you had mentioned.
There, no, I'm not doing it in a minute.
Oh, okay.
I'm still gonna help when I can, when everyone, they're aware, they're aware, and we do have it in our budget to hire a secretary, but. Good luck with that.
How about this? You, 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 you have any thoughts on, on who to contact?
Yeah.
So how many people are you thinking about in terms of who to contact?
Um.
Two, three?
Yeah.
Two, three, right? Okay, so we get, if we, if we, if we share the motion with two to three people, or a paragraph describing the motion with two to three people. We ask them for whatever they think is.
The, I mean, the trick with, the trick with consultants is the, the answer to how much does this cost is how much do you have?
Uh, it's.
Exactly, they're gonna do the deepest analysis they can do, given the money that they, that they have.
I would, I would just, I mean. I, I think as long as we're, we're, we're asking for basically less than or returning, I mean, we're returning back seventy. As long as we're looking to reallocate less than that, I, I I'm comfortable with keeping the request right there.
Sixty.
Yeah. And up, I would say up to, you know.
Yeah, I would say up to, yeah.
This is probably more of an RFQ, right? Yes, here's the question we have, tell us how you're gonna help.
Right.
Um, I think that there's a better narrative when you submit it. To explain how you're gonna take the savings that you have and use it to continue further the mission of what the original three hundred was allocated for. So I I think that's a better story to tell, and the sum of this up, you don't need to have for eleven one. Um, you can provide it out.
Exactly.
We're not, we're not going to put in the meat of the RP, but I put in the concept.
Absolutely, do just do that.
Yeah, okay, I'm happy to do that.
Okay, I'd like to, it's okay, I'd like to move on to the next.
Yeah.
And that's the signs.
They have tons of discussion, I believe.
And the signs, so um, I like the table signs um, for for this meeting.
Would you like this, sir?
Yes, I would, absolutely.
If you're doing.
Want me to scan it and send it to you, or do you want a paper copy?
Um, yeah, we we could do. Bless her heart, just wanted to draw. Um. Yeah. Um, yeah, you can.
I mean, can you change our deal, I don't think, because you want to, are you that?
A lot of towns do.
Yeah, but wouldn't we have to go to the board of selectmen and vote?
Yeah. Well, yeah, I don't think that we would put this on the website tomorrow, you'd have to go through a process, but a lot of towns sort of have a visioning.
I agree, the button. How many songs are around about the button?
So as far as, as far as the signage thing goes, um, you and I will get together and do those things and come up with a couple of questions.
Yeah.
Um, all right, when do you wanna do that?
You wanna be at, be at town hall, you wanna talk over Zoom, you wanna.
Over Zoom.
Yeah, I can. You can send me, there are certain days of the week that are better for you or times of the day.
There's no, there's nothing in it, and it would all be evening, probably six o'clock on twenty fifth. It's next Tuesday.
I was just thinking about, what about, what about next Monday?
It's Monday the twenty fourth.
Cause I will be here and we have some. Weapon, the weapon workshop.
Yeah, we're talking about thirty minutes, huh?
Yeah.
All right, Mike.
That's me. What time would you be?
Six. All right, and um. Reports correspondence, we already went over, Mr. Marshall. Um, any other comments on 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 this, we sort of talked and talked, and I think we have a good understanding um, of what's going on, I don't have any other stuff, do you guys? Mr. Marshall, do you? Thank you, um, and uh, any, before we, we adjourn, are there any items you guys wanna put on the agenda for next meeting? I have, we wanna leave ARPA on the agenda. We have um.
Recruitment, we have to figure out a way to.
Recruitment, we're gonna put on. Um, recruitment, we're gonna put on the agenda. We're gonna have um, uh, something to support existing businesses.
Yeah.
Um, and then we have our consultant slash projections is what I call it, we can call it something else. Um, but.
Do we wanna keep the?
Plan of economic, plan of development or something, so, what's that?
Go ahead, how's that?
I'm sorry, I I, do you wanna put this on there? Do you wanna keep this as a line item? PDC? Application review and discussion?
I think so. No, no, you don't think so?
I think we could keep it. And if it becomes annoying, we could drop it.
Yeah, no, I'm fine with that, cause it's not what you will.
Sorry, it's like, it takes a lot of time, and I'm like, oh my God, if I wanna know, we're gonna learn meeting, so I feel, well, you know. Was not five words or less for each item. I just wanted to point that out to you.
We should have known I was gonna lie about that. We should have known. So can I painfully make one's comment? So one of the things that we would be appreciative of you kind of thinking about and talking about is. As surrounding the SDZ text amendment application, one of the things that was suggested by a member of the public to the planning zone. Um, it was actually multiple, it was initially brought up by Ralph Tullis, was that the Planning and Zoning Commission. Have a workshop with the EDC. As, since the EDC was the initial catalyst of the reg, and the PCC is now considering modifications, and it looks like modifications could go like this or this. So they suggested that the EDC and the PCC have a workshop to discuss the reg and sort of the vision and the goals together. And the commission didn't have built any consensus on it, they didn't really weigh in on it, but at the next hearing. I'm assuming it will come up again, and it would be good if I could report on your behalf, or you can write something to either say, we're interested in having this workshop, or we're not interested.
We're actually talking about the same thing. Road ahead. I think everybody, this, this impasse that we're going through right now. That's called everybody look at where we go. That's when I got, I got that out of the comments that we're talking about, job show. I, I actually think. Certainly open themselves, and we're, we're saying the same thing. How did you leave that?
So we need to just say whether we're interested in that.
It'll work out. My suspicion is. Just had an internet book. Assuming that they put this in a moratorium or some, you know, posit this, so they can revisit the. So there's, yeah, and there's multiple options for doing that, they, like, we talked about just, just taking his application and.
His, his is the name, Mr. Marshall.
Mr. Marshall's application and uh, whacking the whole text, and just, then you would need the moratorium.
Right, and you start again.
Right, because the challenge is a lot of other stuff, moratoriums are for a small amount of time. So we could do that, and then the EDC and the PCC could have a workshop without the confines of any application or any process. And you guys could say what you'd like to see the reg facilitate, and they could say what additional things the the public has suggested. Um, using the proactive approach for small projects and maybe the traditions, so. Really, the question is.
I, I think that the question is. Well, number one, is EDC interested in participating, and then. Who would convene, I think, really, right?
I mean, who would convene?
Yeah, who would sort of? Be the.
I think it would have to be them because.
So I think it would be a joint meeting, yeah, jointly average.
I, I don't think it was. Actually, the BBC, BBC either, I think they wanted to get, you know.
Also, that's.
Public involvement, involvement, potentially even expanding. You know, I think there's.
That's still, to a certain extent, that's why the convening body is important, because they're the ones that would make those implications.
Well, it's not gonna be us.
That's important, okay, so that's important.
Because we are, I just feel like on the whole food chain of bodies, they are an elected body, and they're a little bit.
We're four appointed, so we can, we can, we can just comment.
But you know what I'm saying, they, to me, they should do, send the invite right, I don't know, whatever, that's how I feel, it should be them, because.
That's fine, I, I think you.
But I think, I personally think it's what, I would wanna participate, why are you giving me a side eye?
She knows. I, I, you can, you can, you can be as, as supportive or as, as sort of as you'd like. You know, like, it, I mean, this, this body was the one that initiated this regulation.
True, true.
Um, and obviously, sort of staffing has changed, circumstances have changed. The, the, I mean, I think the regulation works the way it ought to have, because it was a public hearing, and it gained the public input that it requested, so. Um, but this body, you know, if you want to act in support of. Planning and zoning's initiative, that's fine, but I don't think you need to. Um, be shy about convening if you think it's appropriate.
Guys.
There's a pattern in censoring.
I think we should put it on the, put it on the agenda.
Yeah, that sounds good, let's talk about that.
So the only issue, it's gonna come up in less than fourteen days, and you won't have a metagame, so I just need to know if I should convey to the commission that you have interest, and they should leave it open, you know.
It's on our agenda.
You don't know, you're not gonna say we have interest?
Interesting discussion.
We. Well, this was not on the agenda to discuss tonight, for number one, number two, uh, I'm not prepared to make a decision about whether or not we should move forward with this, are you guys? You guys are, it's fine.
Wow.
No, he just said interest in discussion, Matt, like, I think.
And they're committing to it.
Right. Am I, am I understanding that right?
Wanna have a conversation?
BBC wants to participate, the hearing has to stay.
Next month.
The hearing could close, but might not likely at the next meeting. So if you decide at the next meeting you wanna be involved in the particip, in the, in the discussion. You may not have the opportunity, so I just need to know if I should convey to them, you wanna be involved and it should, it should stay open. There's no other, uh, you don't have any opinions on it, you don't have to decide to what extent.
What's, what's, what is the point?
I say yes.
I say yes, too.
Okay. That's good.
All right.
So if it comes up, I'll, I'll let them know that you have an interest in being involved in that, in sort of an opening discussion of that.
Absolutely.
Okay, and it's on there, regarding turf, it's on, it's a there and there.
Yeah, correct. And I think, and I think actually, um, Matt, to your concern about this wasn't on the agenda. Not having a formal motion on this, I think is appropriate, and just we'll find a consensus, and Mike can convey that consensus to the planning zone.
Thanks, I appreciate that.
So I'm with a promotion to adjourn.